You can't have hoofed animals or, or something, but it's, it's getting a bit untenable.
Tom, do you know, do you know if any of those animals are byproducts in being sold? I mean, are, are they all personal consumption of the eggs and the chicken and whatever?
I can't tell you, I've asked, uh, and they really haven't said anything.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of animals.
Yeah, it is.
For a family.
It is, it's a family of five, uh, yeah, it is a huge amount of animals and I, I've gotta think that they're raising the quails at their incubators to be selling them. Now, whether they're doing it online or somewhere else, I don't know, but that is, you're right. Thirty-three chickens, if, if half of them were laying eggs, you'd be past your ears in eggs in, in a day.
And Tom, just for the record, can you state your name and address?
Sure, it's Tom Bates, one twelve Wichita.
Thank you.
Yep, so.
And I think we, you know, staff heard, has heard the comments, so we can, uh, allow staff time to evaluate and, um, if there's anything to bring back to the board, we'll, we'll certainly welcome it.
Well, there's definitely more places that have the chickens and things than just Tom. I got too many wild animals.
You got any coyotes, send them on my way.
I got plenty, believe me, just come down there at night and you hear them.
We've had a bear in our neighborhood.
Send him over. It'd be like eating at KFC. But, yeah, it's just, I mean, like I said, we have chickens, but we don't have thirty-three, we have five and they're probably gonna go down to three, just for eggs. What they're doing with all those chickens and different kinds, I can't tell you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? All right, so next, uh, is review of the minutes from our June meeting, has everyone, uh, had a chance to check those out? And, uh, if so, we can take any comment or emotions.
Maybe they'd be adopted.
Have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Do we have to do the vote thing?
Oh, we gotta do the vote thing now. Oh, that's right.
So Alan, we have a, a new system, if you'll click to the other tab in your browser there, you can vote on the minutes. If anybody has any problems, just wave at me.
I have lots of problems, does it have to be related to this?
I, I gotta bring this, plus many more. It's like, it's very slow.
Yeah, there it is.
I'm not real patient.
Yeah, me either.
And every, every vote, you can, once you're done, you can.
Okay.
Oh, tap on the, tap on the pad there instead of hitting that. There you go, now hit, now click on refresh.
Cast your vote. I'm good.
I'm not gonna ask if you're the contestant or.
All right, so how do I know if you're the contestant?
So it looks like it's unanimous vote, um, and now for our regular business, our first item is to consider a rezoning request from staff. And this is multiple parcels asking to rezone it from the B one, commercial district to the B two district. And I'll turn it over to staff for, uh, for analysis.
Thank you, sir, um, so there's a, uh, there's an, an overview in your packet of, uh, of the different parcels, um, I'll give you just kind of the, the quick version or the quick overview, um. So before the new U D O was adopted in November of last year, we had the B one district and the B two district. Um, we didn't have many parcels at all that were B two, everything was pretty much B one. When the U D O was changed, we decided to designate B one as the sort of core downtown district, so it was much more restrictive and had all these different standards on it. So when we adopted the new U D O, everything that we had that was B one was much more restrictive at that point and had a lot fewer uses that could be put on it. Uh, even though most of those parcels were outside of downtown, which is where we kinda envisioned that designation being. So, um, I think there was discussion, before I was here, I had a discussion with our consultant from Benchmark about, you know, why didn't we change, change one or change the other, or, you know, rezone them all at once? And, um, there was some discussion about how, you know, that might, uh, cause some people some, uh, heartburn and things, cause when you tell somebody you're gonna rezone their property, they typically, you know, think the worst and that you're gonna, you know, change something. So, uh, it was decided to just kinda, um, to put it on the table for a little while, or put it on the back burner for a little while. Um, we've since had a few developers and potential business owners that have inquired about some properties and, um, all of the uses they've wanted to do. Um, well, they've been on parcels that are outside of downtown, but they've been uses that are only allowed in the B two district. So what we decided to do was to send out a letter to everyone that was currently zoned B one and basically say, look, we've got this other district that's more in line with where your property sits right now, it's more in line with what it used to be before we adopted this U D O, but we've kinda changed the rules. And so we'd like to really just kinda clean this up and rezone you from B one to B two. If you're interested, we'll put you all on one application and we'll send it all through at once and, um, that way it's more cost effective for everybody and, uh, and easier to kinda do it all at once. So I'm not sure how many letters we sent out, thirty or so, um, and we got about fourteen responses, um, those are the ones listed in your packet. They're all currently zoned B one, uh, the proposal is to rezone them to B two. Uh, they're all outside of, um, where we would consider it our, our sort of core downtown, where we'd want that, uh, B one zoning, it's much more restrictive. Um, the next item on the agenda is actually gonna be discussion of where that downtown district is, um, but anyway, these are, these are well outside of, uh, of downtown, so, um, that's the, the gist of the request is really just to clean things up, um, the uses that are allowed in B two. Um, there, there are more uses allowed in B two than there are in B one, but before we changed the U D O, the uses were basically the same, B one and B two. So, a little less than a year ago, you basically could do the same thing that if they're changing now from B one to B two, that they could do after that change, if that makes sense. Any questions about that or the specific parcels?
Um, just to clarify and to make sure we understand, so what we have before us is an application or a request from the town staff, um, on behalf of the property owners. And the properties that were, um, contacted and the, the ones that you receive response from, those properties are, in areas that we would, that the land use plan designates as compatible for the B two district.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if you don't hear from the other, whatever it was, sixteen, you would just do nothing?
That's correct, they would stay B one and keep that designation.
Is, um.
So the onus is on them to contact us to change?
It is. Yeah, we didn't want to go through and sort of administratively rezone them all from B one to B two, because then you get into, you know, if somebody doesn't want anything to change, then we don't wanna force them to change it. But from our perspective, um, it cleans things up, um, zoning wise, but then it also helps somebody that has, you know, a parcel a little bit further out of town, have more uses so they can market it to potential developers and the developers don't have to go through the rezoning process that the parcel's kinda just ready to go.
So what would be the downside of doing a blanket one, other than perhaps some people might get upset until they understand what's going on?
Uh, that's the main reason why, is some people might get upset.
So what we'll end up with is still more of the, not spot zoning per se, but still some people right next to each other, one will be zoned B two, the other one will remain B one because that person didn't respond, is that correct?
That's correct.
But if, I think if the person on B one, if in the future, if, if the property owner wanted to use that parcel for something that's only allowed in B two, then there's their incentive to apply at that point in time.
Yeah, at that point, they could bring it through.
And there'll be a cost involved?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Is there a cost to these fourteen that responded?
Um, I don't believe we've charged anybody for this since we initiated this request, so, yes, sir, yeah.
Um.
I, I would recommend that if we go ahead and we do approve these sixteen, that we might send another, hey, this is your final warning, moving forward, this is gonna cost you on the remaining. Cause I just don't like the idea of having split, you know, zones.
Sure.
Is there a, a map that we could see highlighting the parcels that are, that are on the application?
Um, we, um, we tried to get a, a map made and, um, couldn't, uh, couldn't get anyone to assist us with that. We don't, we didn't have a way to select all those different parcels and show them, um, I can, I can pull up any of the parcels in particular if you are interested about them, um, on G I S, but.
Just being a zoning map amendment, which is basically what this would be.
Yeah.
Be nice to see the map. I think too, you know, when you're considering to rezone property, it's nice to see what's around, what's around each of those parcels to make sure that the uses would be compatible with what you're proposing to rezone it to. Is there a public hearing set for this?
Uh, there is for, um, yeah, for the council meeting.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And you'd have to do proper notification of adjoining property owners and.
Is that what I'm seeing on the signs, I, I did see some zoning signs.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a way to, we have internet, internet access in here, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can pull, we can pull maps up here, you can pull G I S up on your laptop, so, yeah, we can, um.
Yeah, if you could plug it up there, I'm still struggling voting.
We just take the mouse and hover over some of those areas?
Mm-hmm, sure.
So we get a good visual?
I assume the Elam is the, is that office down there, right? Susan and Elam, where they had the real estate business?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Are any of them just land, is it, are there, are there structures on everything?
There are, so there's a, uh, there's a few structures, um, but the Cecil Burton Manning is, uh, is land, uh, Arnold Phillips' properties are land. Uh, the Cruise Through, the two Cruise Through parcels are the, uh, Cruise Through and the, um, Car Wash. Um, I'm not sure which one Holland is, I believe it's land, but we can look that one up.
I think Susan and Elam's got a lot behind that, that business too, an individual lot back there, so there's probably one of them that's land too.
Okay.
Why, why did, uh, why did you guys choose to contact vacant property owners?
Um, we'd had some requests from developers on some of those parcels and the uses they wanted to do weren't compatible in B one, but the areas were compatible with a use that would be okay in B two.
Just curious.
Yes, some of the, I mean, the, the Cecil Burton Manning property's not, uh, not being marketed, or, uh, I think it's being farmed right now, but, um, the Arnold Phillips' properties, for example, are listed for sale and it's on commercial and have surrounding commercial, um. Yeah, one is a, um, vacant lot next to the American, um, I think that's Spring Inn Investors. Uh, Gardner Web University, uh, is the, um, Omax Gardner Foundation building out East College that's B one, um. Yeah, the First National Bank, that's Bank O Z K, yeah. Which one's Fred Hoyle's property, six twenty-six? Oh, is that the hotel one?
And all these folks said go ahead and do, they were fine doing B two?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, so those two lots, the Fred Hoyle and the Spring Inn Investors are the, um, um, the lot on Ascot Street where the, uh, the gym and the, um, department store are, and then the, uh, vacant lot just to the west of it.
And so all these parcels too are currently zoned B one?
Correct.
And since the U D O changed, those, that zoning district list uses that you'd typically find in a downtown area?
Sir.
Let's see.
Phillips' property up on Homestead.
Yep. Seen some signs here for a while now.
Mm-hmm.
Cruise Through and the Car Wash still don't show up on the G I S map, but it still shows as vacant parcels there, but that's where the Cruise Through is.
Which one is, uh, seventy-four thousand, the Holland? Where did you say it was?
I believe that's up north Maine, but. Oh, that is just south of the Car Wash.
Yeah, it's that house.
It's that house, it's there.
There's a sign in that yard, I know, saw this.
Yeah. It's, um, between, between La Bella Vita and the Car Wash.
Yeah, it's, it's still a residence.
It is, it's, um, it's zoned B one, being used as a residence, so once the use of a residence stops, they have to stop the residential use.
What about, what about, uh, Spring Inn Investors, five eight three eight six? Okay, is that the hotel? And the two two five one Gardner Web, which parcel is that?
It's out on East College near Patrick.
Crossman Day here.
The Gardner Foundation's got there.
Oh, is that the one we rezoned a couple of years ago?
Yeah, yeah.
So that is the Gardner Foundation?
That's the Gardner Foundation.
Always liked that house.
It's pretty house, pretty lean.
Yeah. Okay. So, I mean, board of, I think we've seen all the parcels, that, to me, the parcels that we've seen here and that are in the list, it seems like, you know, based on land use plan and location, that they would be a better fit in the B two than the B one district. Does anybody have any other comments or questions?
No, I'll have to abstain because of the Gardner Web issue.
There's no objections, I don't see any reason not to personally.
I agree.
Have a motion?
Yep.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, let's all try to.
I agree, here we go.
You could, um, you could vote on all those at once and David could abstain, you could vote on the Gardner Web one and then do the other one separately, it's, we're, we're okay with however you all wanna see.
Yeah, do y'all wanna vote all at one time?
All at one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna fool with that computer that much. So can I hear you now, that, would I get all of them? Okay.
Okay, so I need, do I need to refresh? Okay.
Must be going through all sixteen of them or something, cause it's slow.
You good, J T?
No, it hasn't taken it yet.
Click on submit both there.
That'll, that'll make it better.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right, so motion passes, planning board's recommendation for council would be to, uh, um, approve based on compliance with land use plan and, and the location of the parcels. Um, next item on the agenda?
So our, uh, our next item was to, um, hear from our consultant with Benchmark who assisted us in, uh, rewriting the U D O. Um, he's coming to discuss the establishment of a downtown overlay district, um, so we have a, an overlay district in the U D O, but it's not actually defined where the boundaries are for that, and it has different design standards, so as businesses come into what we'll designate as this core sort of downtown, um, district, um, they will have to adhere to much more restrictive standards than, uh, businesses further out than that. Um, he said he would be here, uh, around six fifteen, so, um, we do have a, uh, training video that we, uh, wanted to play for you all, just to kinda give an overview of, um, the one sixty D regulations that, uh, were changed, has it been two years now, a year and a half or so? Um, they were recently changed by the legislature, um, they updated the, the laws around land use regulations, and, um, we've incorporated a lot of those changes into the new U D O, um, but we haven't really gotten to, to use those, those rules and regulations yet. So wanted to, uh, to show you all a, a video on that to, um, make you better informed as we probably have more of those decisions coming forward, uh, but also to kill a little bedtime, so.
Did you make popcorn?
We did not.
Hi, I'm David Owens, a professor at the U N C School of Government. This training is about the context and background for chapter one sixty D, North Carolina's new statute that addresses planning and development regulation by cities and counties. In this training, we'll go over who developed this proposal, why it was developed, and how it was adopted. We'll also do a brief overview of the contents of chapter one sixty D.
David Owens?
Yeah.
This proposal was developed as a good government suggestion by the North Carolina Bar Association's zoning, planning, and land use section. It's very important to note that this proposal was developed not as an advocacy piece by city and county attorneys or by attorneys for the development industry. Rather, the zoning, planning, and land use section includes attorneys who represent the entire diversity of those involved in planning and development regulation in North Carolina. Cities, counties, builders, developers, neighbors, and citizens interested in how planning and development regulation takes place. It is not an advocacy proposal from any single group, but rather an overall attempt to improve the quality of the statutes for everyone. Why was this proposal developed? Over the past ninety years, the state has adopted individual legislative authorization for cities and counties to do planning and development regulation. Early building regulation was adopted in nineteen oh five, planning was authorized in nineteen nineteen, zoning for cities came along in nineteen twenty-three. And that continued over the course of the next ninety years, a series of individual statutory enactments, dealing with subdivision, housing codes, building codes, and other forms of development regulation. Each was developed independently without really integrating them into the other statutes. In the early nineteen seventies, these statutes, many of the statutes, but not all of them, were consolidated into individual articles in chapter one fifty-three A for counties, in chapter one sixty A for cities. But other than collecting them into individual articles, there was no attempt to integrate the administrative provisions or otherwise deal with how these individual statutes related one to another. So the zoning, planning, and land use section of the state bar took, stepped back to take a look at how all of these fit together. Importantly, there are other initiatives that set a precedent for doing this. The state chapter of the American Planning Association in two thousand and five sponsored a bill that overwrote, that rewrote the zoning statutes, uh, and modernized those some. In two thousand and nine, the judicial reviewed provisions, what is now chapter, section one sixty A three ninety-three of the statutes was adopted, uh, and proposed by, as proposed by the zoning section. And in two thousand and thirteen, the zoning section did a rewrite of the quasi judicial statutes, which the general assembly adopted as chap, G S one sixty A three eighty-eight. But none of these looked at the overall planning and development regulation statutes, rather they looked at individual pieces of this. So, the one sixty D effort was to step back and take a look at all of what was in the two articles in the city and county statutes on planning and development regulation. The first draft was prepared in two thousand and thirteen, and in two thousand and fourteen, it was broadly circulated to all of those stakeholders interested in planning and development regulation. Copies of the initial proposal went to all city and county attorneys, city and county planners, zoning administrators, representatives of various development groups, the North Carolina Home Builders Association, the Realtors, those representing folks doing commercial development, industrial development, shopping center development. In short, anyone interested in planning and development regulation in North Carolina was asked to review and comment on these proposals. This went on for several years to refine and develop what eventually became the version of chapter one sixty D that was adopted in two thousand and nineteen. The bill was first introduced in the legislature in two thousand and fifteen as a House bill, the House of Representatives passed that bill, but the Senate did not elect to take it up in the two thousand and fifteen session of the General Assembly. In two thousand and seventeen, the proposal started as a Senate bill, and the Senate adopted the bill, but the House in two thousand and seventeen decided not to take it up. Finally, in two thousand and nineteen, the proposal was introduced both as a Senate and House bill, in the Senate, that's Senate Bill four forty-eight, and in the House, as House Bill four twenty-two. All of the parties agreed that the bill would proceed first in the Senate, and then if it was, if it was successful, move on over to the House. While the Senate was considering this, there was a separate bill, Senate Bill three fifty-five, that was proposed by the State Home Builders Association. That bill had a number of substantive refinements, primarily in the zoning statutes, uh, and that was considered as a separate bill. The legislature, the Senate, decided that both bills needed to be considered in consideration of the other, and neither should proceed independently. So the Senate merged the two bills into Senate three fifty-five, with the home builder's original proposal as part one of that bill, and the bar association's chapter one sixty D proposal as part two of that bill. Part one went through the legislative process with the considerable amendments and refinements as it proceeded. Part two, the one sixty D proposal, was largely unchanged, other than a few minor technical amendments, it stayed as originally introduced. And eventually, the combined bill was passed nearly unanimously by the Senate and the House and became law in July of two thousand and nineteen. In a nutshell, what does what chapter one sixty D do? It consolidates the city and county development statutes into a single chapter on planning and development regulation, chapter one sixty D, with uniform procedures that are applicable to cities and counties. It reorganizes all of these statutes into a more coherent, logical, and user-friendly framework, and it includes a number of consensus reforms to clarify and modernize this large body of statutes. The consolidation takes everything that was in the article on planning and development regulation, the county statute and the city statute, and merges them into a single provision as chapter one sixty D. It also pulls in other related statutes such as zoning of family care homes, regulation of outdoor advertising, regulation of adult businesses, and puts them all into one sixty D to make it easier for those who are dealing with planning and development regulations to find these statutes and make sure they are related well one to another. Most of the provisions are now in one sixty D, the same for cities and counties, but intentional differences, such as the county zoning exemption for bona fide farming, is retained. but intentional differences such as the county zoning exemption for bona fide farming is retained. The new organization puts all of these provisions into fourteen separate articles. As with the prior statutes, there are separate articles for zoning, for subdivision, building codes, housing codes, and so forth. But very importantly, chapter one sixty D pulls out the provisions that are applicable to all of the sections and puts those in the front of the chapter in separate articles so that you have common procedures and provisions that affect all of the different types of development regulations. For example, the most important ones, I think, are in Article One. Definitions that are applicable to all development regulations are included. The regular provisions on development moratoria that might affect zoning approvals or subdivision plot approvals are included. Provisions on vested rights that cut across all types of development regulations are included in Article One, as are provisions on conflicts of interest. So that a governing board concerned about conflicts of interest with legislative decisions, a board making quasi-judicial decisions such as special use permits or variances, or the staff making administrative decisions such as uh, an approval of an individual permit. The conflicts of interest provisions for all of those types of decisions are included in one section in Article One, making it easier for folks to find out what statutory provisions apply across the board. The second major innovation is to put administrative provisions in Article Four.
You can send that an email, I'll, I'll need it to sleep later tonight. Who says zoning is dry?
Alright, so um, as I mentioned, uh, we have our consultant here from Benchmark to uh, go through the downtown design overlay district. I'll turn it over to you Vaughn. You wanna hook up the computer, or are you good? They've got printouts. Okay, they've got printouts of everything you sent.
So, if you recall, when we were working on the adoption of the ordinance, we had mentioned that we included an overlay district in there that wasn't applied to the map. And the intention was to avoid having to have simultaneous rezoning of property while the ordinance was being adopted. And the plan was to revisit the application of that downtown design overlay at some point in the future, which I gather is now here. So Justin asked me to come and um, discuss with you um, a few things, I guess. One, just the, the general outline of what the overlay district is, and as well as potential for the geographic scope of where it might be applied. And it'll be initiated just like any other kind of rezoning where the staff were planning. Would, would be initiating it, and it would go through the public hearing process with notice to the property owners and then to the, to the town council before it vote. The way this overlay district um, works um, is that it applies a higher standard for site and architectural design with the purpose of achieving a, a higher aesthetic appearance for your downtown area. And so, properties within that would have to submit additional types of documents for, during plan review and uh, would have to adhere to those standards. There are some, currently some general standards for, I think they're probably applied to the most non-residential properties in town already um, in terms of, of building design. This would kind of go a little bit further with the intent again of achieving a, a greater aesthetic and functional quality to the downtown area. Did you already give them the maps?
Yes, they got the maps.
Alright. So just some, some general notes about the downtown design overlay. So, excuse me, once, once applied on the zoning map, um, these standards would apply to all new construction and alteration of existing buildings and structures within the area that's covered by. There are some things that will be exempt from this, um, such as interior and exterior alterations of buildings that are originally designed and built for single-family or two-family residential use and which continue to be used residential use. Any kind of regular maintenance work on buildings that doesn't alter the appearance or function of the building. Interior remodeling work that doesn't affect anything happening on the outside, as well as things like temporary uses of structures of somebody who's having them. And then on their property, of course, of a tent or something like that, they're allowed to have, wouldn't have to comply with either. Some of the standards that it does impose um, from a site perspective are, number one, having a front um, built-to line. But notice that some of the buildings that have been built in more recent years may be in the downtown area, like the, the drugstore, for instance, um, sit back behind areas of parking that surround them. This would essentially pull those buildings back up closer to the street, except off-street parking, it would just need to be generally behind buildings. The requirements for storefront design in terms of requiring a minimum amount of glaze area or glass area on the front of buildings, so you don't have long expanses of blank wall fronting the street. Uh, there are requirements for exterior building materials, um, generally requiring at least eighty percent of the exterior building walls, other than those flat surfaces be either. Brick or stone, including veneers or cast concrete panels having the appearance of one of those. Remaining twenty percent being able to be of a pretty wide lot, variety of other materials, including charcoal grade metal, tiles, stucco, um, colors put face to block. There are some color palettes that would be applicable in there for the um, exterior building materials. Do the primarily design based off of some historic color palettes. Benjamin Moore uses. Align with any kind of paint mixing or color matching that you want to do. It's primarily to keep there from being bright red or bright yellow, bright green, flashy kinds of buildings um, being constructed. There's, excuse me. Some standards for awnings and canopies, um, just primarily oriented towards ensuring that they're functional awnings and they're also not loud colors. Standards for roof forms. Additional standards for signage, uh, there would not be new freestanding signs. Again, going along with the, the premise of having the building pulled up to, to the streets. Existing freestanding signs that are there today could remain. New requirements for screening mechanical and utility equipment, either on the roofs or behind or side buildings. New drive-through windows or other automobile oriented surface facilities would not be permitted in the downtown design overlay. And then finally, if there were some conflict between um, these provisions and somebody that wanted to restore a building to its original or historic uh, appearance and character, as long as the state historic preservation office um, or an architect or architectural historian was able to certify that the proposed work was being done, they could do that work even if it conflicted with, with these standards. So that's a general, I think we probably went through this in a little bit less detail when we were working on the overall ordinance, since we weren't applying it anywhere. But generally, these standards would be what would be applied um, in an area of your choosing or the campus choosing to affect primarily new construction, but it'll also affect any kind of major renovations or operations that would be done in the chosen, identified, designated downtown area. Questions?
Did I understand you to say there'd be no drive-through windows?
There'd be no new drive-through windows.
So if a new fast food came to Boilin' Springs under this new plant, they wouldn't be allowed to have a drive-through?
Not in this area. Can you give, make a recommendation of what area that is?
Yeah, I think the, the ordinance, the language is, we've adopted that. What we're deciding today is where, where to apply that. Um, and the, the idea is to apply it in what we would consider the downtown area.
I remember the conversation about, I'd forgotten that we adopted it. We actually voted on.
Yeah, we had, we voted on the language, but never actually applied it to a map.
So what is tradit- traditionally considered the downtown area here?
I think that's what we're here to decide.
Well, I mean, I, I understand that, but I'm new to the town, so. You know, what I might consider is downtown might be completely different than, you know, lifelong residence.
Justin, or, or Vaughn, either one can, y'all, y'all explain the maps that you've uh, provided us.
Yeah, so the map just shows a, a, a street map and then a kind of an aerial view to help orient you um, to essentially three different extents of potential application of the overlay. The one that's in the lightest blue color that I've labeled one on there is what might be the, maybe the, the most narrow extent that I would just kind of have as a starting point as a, a recommendation. And then that builds up to maybe what might be the greatest extent of the application going darker blue colors going to areas two and three in there. And so the greatest extent would be from east to, or west to east, from uh, basically Stadium Drive to the area around Fairview. And north to south from around Bethel down to um, Branch. That would be the, the greatest essential extent of where that downtown overlay might apply. And these are really just to, to help get you um, thinking about an area that you might want to prefer or recommend. We can modify that, change it. I'm sure there's probably some individual parcels here or there that you might think were more, more appropriate for them to be in versus out or out versus in. Those really, those, those areas kind of are labeled with, you know, different letters as well as kind of as distinct to say, well, I think, you know, it shouldn't go as far as just three B's, so let's block that one off and uh, bring it in just as a way of be more easily identified. What you might think should be included or excluded.
I, I personally think one would be a good starting point. Not sure about the parcels on that northernmost, the northernmost, northernmost. I guess it's outlined all in blue because that's one parcel, right? The one that goes down the neighborhood street and grabs some of those houses?
Yeah, that's one, that's one parcel.
Okay. For me, I guess the question's how far beyond number one do we actually go? You know, do you add two A to that, which is the bulk of campus?
I, I, I think one is a good, like you said, a good starting point. Encompasses enough of what I would consider the downtown area. If you were just coming in from out of town, this would be, you know, a core area.
You're talking about all the light blue?
Yeah, if you're coming from the uh, Gaffney Road north, it starts where the old school is on the right. And then it goes all the way to uh, uh, basically the, the bank right there in front of Ingalls, to that intersection.
And two, just for reference, two B is all owned by the town. So, we would probably want to build our stuff.
Is that where the park is and the?
Yeah, the uh.
No, we should exclude ourselves from anything we require anybody else to do.
We're probably already excluded now. Yeah, two B is the park and then a part of the, uh, the old school building there, so.
That makes sense.
And what this would do is uh, it wouldn't replace the underlying zoning districts, which are probably a lot of B one. Is that right, Steph?
I think so, but look.
Cause B one's the zoning district that we typically.
So you're saying on South Ma- Main to up to East Main or wherever I'm looking at there, E- North Main Road. Uh, it started at the old high school? Like that road coming down? And go to the bank, First National Bank?
It looks like it goes to that intersection just before the bank.
Front of Green Bethel.
Oh, the bank's not included, just about there, okay.
Yeah, not including the bank.
And then the other way?
Looks like it's going to uh, uh, the Napa store.
Roosters, that road, that's the Roosters, the old Roosters there, Fairview.
I'm sorry.
Or, hit me again.
You know where Fairview Road is if you go down? Um, that's where the line will be, so.
Okay.
Now is on your right, the old Roosters is on your left, that would be where it ends.
Okay.
And Mr. Martin, uh, our parcel, the towns, is B one, Gardner Webbs is uh, institutional.
Okay. And so this would, you know, once approved, this would apply an overlay district on top of the underlying zoning districts, whatever they are. And they would, this overlay district would apply these additional standards which Vaughn described. I forgot to tell you Vaughn, thank you for coming.
What is three C? What is, what is that? Is that part of Gardner Webbs too now?
I guess.
Okay, yeah, it's over a little more.
That's Hardee's, I guess.
I think Hardee's is on.
It's like the Rose Garden?
Yeah, there's Hardee's.
Okay. Alright, so that's all part of Gardner. Yeah, okay, that's all part of Gardner.
Hardee's as well.
Let's say on most of the town.
That's all owned by Gardner Webbs.
Okay. Yeah, I would say one and two B would be a good, a good start for the overlay.
And being a, a zoning ordinance change, um, it would require a public hearing and notification to property owners being a zoning map change. Is there a public hearing set for this one as well?
There's not, you know Vaughn and I had the discussion of not knowing how much discussion you all would have and whether we need to come back to you all or we'd be ready to take it to council, so we haven't, we haven't said anything yet.
What's the thoughts from staff? Do you have any thoughts on the Gardner Webbs campus um, being included as a parcel that are subject to these additional standards?
Yeah, I was gonna ask Vaughn how that might apply, so I, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't fall into this, but for example, they're planning to build a, an amphitheater in a new building that fronts the road. I'm sure they want to put the people on the side of it, but it's red-black.
I know that setback, you know, to me, the setback's maybe the one that.
It's, it probably doesn't, the way the standards are written, they probably don't work very well with a campus type setting. That's not really, that wasn't really the intent. Um, it was really intended mostly to apply to commercial buildings and office service-type buildings of that nature. And so, an integrated kind of campus setting like that, this would, again, probably does not, not function as well. They, they would run into problems, I think, if it was, and even applying it, just given how big the parcels are. It's like, well, where, how do you, you know, think about, you know, this building, you know, six hundred feet on the road? Cause uh, there are, and that's, that's why it excluded that one bigger parcel if it had the small amount of road frontage over there. There are certainly institutions that exist in kind of urban downtown settings that blend in and conform to the nature of what's around them. This isn't really that kind of place, so to speak. You kind of think about this other kind of small college towns beside it, a little bit bigger, you can place some pavements and how the. The campus is integrated nicely into the town, but it's still kind of a different. The campus is integrated nicely into the town, but it's still kind of a different setting than the, the commercial downtown area around it.
But, but aren't they planning with this, this new addition, what's gonna be up on the road is, uh, restaurants?
Yes, sir. But it would be far enough south where it wouldn't. It wouldn't even be where we're looking on this.
I understand it's not in that area you're talking about.
But, so to your point though, there is a provision in the U D O that talks about buildings that front on. North and South Main and East and West College still have to. I was just looking it up when you said that, but they still have to adhere to, I don't know if it's building materials or colors or.
Uh, I think, oh, uh, the, yeah.
It's definitely the build to line.
Ten, um. So there's a general. Kind of, you know, one of the things that, since the downtown overlay wasn't being applied immediately, we put a, a kind of a minor provision in the ordinance that applied to anything that's a zone. Uh, B one or B two as well as any other numbers that were really located on one fifty, or state reps one thousand three or eleven sixty one that were constructed or offered following effective data or, or, or. And so they have to adhere to the same building material and color standards. So anything else, uh, but we're not, not, we're not requiring the front build to line or the rear parking or the, um, no drive-throughs or the. Other types of standards, just the, just those two basic, um, standards, materials and colors elsewhere in town. If it's on one of those roads, if you're in an industrial, you're building an industrial park or something like that, then you don't have to adhere to, it's just buildings that are fronting on one of those roads.
Let me ask you a question. Up here where the chapel's at for Gardner Webb, that's within the zone. If they someday decided to tear that building down and rebuild it into some other kind of building, would they have to adhere to the new plan? Or would they get excluded because they're a campus?
I think that's what we've gotta decide, is where do we wanna apply this new plan?
If it's.
Well, I thought we decided it if it started at the high school and went up, that was the new plan.
It's on the right side of the road only, with, if you're looking at number one.
Okay.
Um, they, we just have some options here.
Just, just the light blue right now.
Yeah. I think the, the school owns two A, three A and three C.
Yeah.
And then Turner Trucking owns three B. I mean, to, you know, I'm looking at number one and probably two B is your.
Mm-hmm. I would agree with that.
Yeah. Is the two that are easy choices.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, another thing to keep in mind is that say that, um, the trucking company someday said, well, we're gonna move out closer to the highway. We're gonna sell our property while somebody comes in and redevelop it. Um, it would, I think it's a zone industrial now, so A have to be rezoned probably to some other kind of, you know, B one or B two, you know, whatever. Then you could apply that if you thought that it was gonna be an extension of your downtown, then at the same time you rezone the property, you could also apply the, the downtown overlay if you wanted to. Uh, require it to the same standards. So this isn't.
Could you apply it even if the? Even if the owner at the time doesn't request that?
Yes.
Couldn't remember that.
But so, again, this is, you know, not locked in stone. And so if you feel a need to come back and revisit it at some point, this, this like the standards. That really aren't locked in stone either, if you find that something isn't working well or if there's something else that you would think would, you're worthy of regulation, you can add, subtract, modify. Both the, what's regulated as well as the extent of where it's applied. And this only, again, this only gets triggered when somebody does something, there's, this doesn't require anybody to, they're sitting around enjoying having their business, they don't have to. Tomorrow go over, you know, go in and fix up their building to comply with the standards. It's only based on the, their action to improve, redevelop, build, what have you.
And what we're looking at is, I know Vaughn's went over this, but it's the ordinance which is already adopted. Uh, has some standards base, uh, standards applying. Or standards that are, um, it's adopted standards that are applied to the front setback for new construction. And then some parking standards and then some storefront design standards about the glazed window. Um, and then the amount of windows. And then exterior building materials, which you see a lot of color requirements, and then awnings and canopies. And then it gives some, uh, um. Some exemptions for, uh, historical properties when they're working to maintain that integrity.
So what do we need to do? Vote on, make a motion or just accept one and two B or, or whatever we decide? Is that what we need to do?
At, at this point, what you would essentially be doing would be making a recommendation.
City.
To the council to move forward with something that's wouldn't, um. Trigger a hearing, I guess it could, um, um. But I, I think that the, the order of, you know, procedure for this would be to send a proposal to the council. Have them. Give their input as well and then initiate the formal process of, uh, doing the zoning map amendment and getting in touch with the property owners, maybe inviting them to a meeting or something like that. Kind of explaining what's going on, uh, before, or as you're going through the formal process of.
So we can entertain a motion to, to, uh, recommend council consider applying. The overlay district to the area shown on the map of one and two B. And then if council agrees, they would then send it back to us for a formal comment and, and a formal recommendation.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we recommend what you said. I'll say.
Uh, have a motion in a second.
Do we have to vote on?
We're talking about the light blue or?
The light blue and.
And two B.
And two B.
Cause two B is owned by the town.
Oh, okay.
That's where the park is and the ball fields. Got a motion in a second? So it's time to vote.
Chris, can you come to the council meeting and help council with the loading?
What's that?
Can you come to the council meeting and help council with the loading of the, of the, of the.
I got to quit in it.
It's really the first trial run, so it's been going, it's been going alright.
Got it. I'd say I have trouble moving that stupid thing around.
Yeah, I'm like a mouse better.
Me too.
Alright, so. Thank you Vaughn, thank you Steph. There's a lot of hard work to put into that. And next item on the agenda, I'll, just to adjourn the meeting, but I, um, I'll open it up if staff has any comments or anyone else.
Can I ask what we ended up doing on the, um, tattoo place?
Yes, um, so to follow up on, uh, the conversation from last month, um, Ms. Allen looked at what it would do if it reduced the footage from five hundred down to two fifty. And it didn't open up any additional parcels. Um, so council decided to take out the, uh, residential language in there, saying that it had to be two or, or five hundred feet from residentially used or residentially zoned property. Uh, which would still permit him to open it on that parcel, but kept all the other restrictions in place, that still has to be five hundred feet from another like business, uh, park and church.
So it just took out residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Got a motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank y'all.
Yep.
How do we notify property owners? Is it all adjacent?
Thank you guys.
Adjacent property owners?
Well, yeah, I mean, you should have to notify this.